So hello. And welcome to the -- is this on? Oh, okay. Start yelling at people. Anyway, welcome to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. Jackie, do you want to do roll call?
Commissioner Lee.
Press it.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Meltz.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Navarro.
Here.
Commissioner Galloway.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Moe.
Here.
Chair Olson. Here. Thank you, Jackie. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Were there any edits or additions to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Second?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Just that I felt that the minutes are a very good reflection, so I want to thank Jackie for her dutiful recording.
Great.
Second?
Anything on the agenda?
Oh, was that -- it was a minute. I'm sorry. Second that.
Okay, there you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So approval of the meeting minutes. Susan, do you have any comments on these?
Already stated for the record. In the wrong spot, though.
Good. Any other comments or edits, corrections?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Aye, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. So next up is the -- we have one public hearing. It's a public hearing for rezoning request at 6453-6451 McCauley Terrace.
The applicants are requesting a rezoning from R2 double dwelling unit district to R1 single dwelling unit district for 6453 and 6451 McCauley Terrace. The subject property is in the southeast quadrant of the intersections of Highway 169 and Highway 62. The purpose of the rezoning is to build two new single-family homes, and the applicants are the anticipated owners of the proposed single-family house at 6453 McCauley Terrace, which is the northern lot here. Each of the two properties are slightly under .4 acres. Both properties are vacant and heavily wooded, and both have access to existing sanitary sewer and water lines. Each of the proposed single-family houses will be accessed off of the McCauley Terrace Currently, both of the subject properties are guided as low-density residential in the comp plan. The R1 zoning request is consistent with the comp plan. Properties, as you can see on the map here, along the frontage road are generally zoned R2, and properties located within or are accessed off of the cul-de-sacs are zoned The city engineer has reviewed proposed plans and has found them acceptable, subject to his conditions. A more detailed grading plan would be reviewed by the city engineer at the time of building permit application for each of the homes. A construction management plan would be required. Specific hookup locations would be reviewed at the time of building permit, and a nine-mile creek watershed district permit would be required at the time of building permit as Detailed plans were submitted for the 6453 lot, and a potential structure placement exhibit was submitted for the 6451 lot. Detailed plans for both of those lots would be reviewed at the time of building permit. Tonight's staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the preliminary rezoning from R2 to R1 with the conditions as listed in the staff report. Here are the plans that were submitted for 6453 McCauley Terrace, the site plan for that lot, and then this is the potential placement -- structure placement exhibit that was submitted for 6451. Any questions?
Thank you, Emily. Are there questions? Commissioner Strauss?
So it was zoned R2, and the request is to change it to R1. So if it's zoned R2, that's the only -- they were limited to -- that's all they could do is build a two-family or side-by-side?
Yes. Single-family homes are not allowed in the R2 zoning district.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Navarro.
Yeah. Do you know the ordinance? Because I had the understanding you could do either way. So maybe I may have misunderstood.
I believe it was looked at at a past point in time, but it is not allowed today.
Correct. The Planning Commission and council considered allowing -- most cities do allow single-family homes in their R2 district. There was an ordinance before the Planning Commission and city council, but ultimately it was determined not to change the code at that time. That was about three, four years ago.
I just am interested in the background of this particular property. Did it ever have a two-family home on it? Never? So it was never, never had anything developed on that property. What is -- so why was it designated as R2?
Carrie, do you know the background on the zoning?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why, because you do have R1 on one side of the street, R2 on the other. Whether the thinking was those lots would be accessed off of the frontage road, I'm not sure.
Okay. And I noticed that there is a driveway cut onto one of the parcels. Was that from the previous?
Yes. I believe there is -- the driveway cuts are currently for the northernmost lot are on McCauley Terrace.
Okay. And then, right now, they're only proposing to build -- they're showing the plans for the northernmost lot. Is that correct?
Yep.
And it looks like that falls within our setback ranges.
Yes.
What about the buildable area of the second lot? Did you take a look at and see if there were any issues in terms of what kind of footprint does that leave?
That is just kind of a basic lot, so it's -- that's not the specific footprint that would be on that lot. So it would -- it could range. So I didn't look specifically at, you know -- generally, it would conform or would be able to conform.
It's a pretty large lot. They would be able to construct a home that would meet all of our setback and height regulations. If they didn't, a variance would obviously come before the Planning Commission.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not looking at if there was a reason to do -- usually when there's an R2 designation, it's because, well, obviously, you're looking at one setback for one structure. So now with two structures, you've got two separate parcels with two separate setbacks. So my question was just asking on that second parcel if you felt that there were any concerns about that being -- and we've all seen strange buildable footprints as well, so if that would leave in any way a deficient footprint? No, no concerns. Okay. And I'm just curious. What is sort of the city's thinking on R2? In some ways, it's a different residential housing type. Is there any guidance from the comp plan that kind of talks about a mix of housing types or edina or any recommendations for maintaining a different type or variety of housing?
Not specifically. Again, this is in a low-density area. Either a duplex or single-family home would be considered that low-density. I believe some of the thinking that went into not allowing single-family homes to be built on R2 lots was R2 provided an opportunity to construct affordable housing. Since then, however, our experience has been with the tear-down rebuilds of duplexes, they're anything but affordable. They've been very large. So we really haven't seen that.
But in general, you would think that a two-family house, in terms of value, would be priced at a lower price point than a single-family home?
Yeah. I'm not sure if I could conclude that. Some of the duplexes have been pushing that million-dollar range, similar to our single-family homes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Navarro.
Edina City Code, Section 36-466, is entitled "requirements for building coverage setbacks in height." Oh, wait, that's not the one I want. Sorry, I had it, and I've been reading on. Section 36-464, "conditional uses." It says the conditional uses permitted in the double-dwelling unit district per N -- R2 close per N are additions to replacement of single-dwelling unit buildings and buildings containing two dwelling units with a first-floor elevation of more than one foot above the existing first-floor elevation of the existing dwelling unit building. And then it goes on about conditions for meeting these things regarding the FEMA and, you know, a couple of substitutions. But it's interesting to me that it refers to additions to replacement of single-dwelling unit buildings or two-dwelling unit buildings. So how does that square with saying that single-dwelling unit buildings aren't allowed in R2?
I believe it is referencing existing dwellings. So if there's an existing single-family unit -- I'm not aware of any in town. A single-dwelling unit that's located on an R2 lot. But I believe it's suggesting here if someone wanted to build in addition to that, it would be a conditionally permitted use.
True, but that's kind of a nonsensical reading to say that single-dwelling units were permitted at some point, obviously, and you can replace a single-dwelling unit with another single-dwelling unit, but you can't take two uninhabited lots and place a single -- you can't take an uninhabited lot and place a single-dwelling unit on it?
That is correct.
That seems a little bit of placing rules over reason.
One alternative to reconcile that would be to make a recommendation to the city council to allow a single-dwelling unit on an R2 lot.
Yeah, but as I read it, it's permitted right now.
It's not listed specifically as a principal use.
And I think that we're reading these things too tight and making them work for everyone. And I don't -- nobody can even explain why the rule exists. So we're just sitting here with some arbitrary rule, and we're enforcing it. It's not even written very well.
It's pretty clear that a single-dwelling unit is not allowed in an R2 district, starting from a vacant lot.
Not as I read it. I mean, I don't know, you know. Whenever the Minnesota Supreme Court, we'd say, no, that's pretty clear that it's allowed.
Your recommendation could be to make it clear with an ordinance amendment that would allow, really, what they're proposing here would then be a permitted use.
This is your read, Carrie. It's your read.
So any other comments for the family? Good. Okay, great. Okay.
In case, you know, there's, you know, four curb cuts kind of already along that terrace just for the potential. Is there any history as to were there plans for this at one point or not?
Do you know of any plans other than the existing subdivision?
I'm not aware of any.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would they like to speak? Do you want to add anything or?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you have a --
Okay. Are there questions for the applicant? Yeah, then you'll have to come up and state your name and -- one of the -- yeah, there you go.
Question?
Nope. They should have all set for you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lindsey Meander. Thanks for considering our application.
I'm Ian Meander.
Commissioner Lee, did you have a question?
I did. So are you owners of the property?
So our purchase agreement is contingent on the rezoning.
So if this is not granted, you will not purchase the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, I think you referred to the estate. I'm not sure if it's the owner. It might be the owner who is supportive of this. Do you have any documentation of that? I didn't notice the letter or anything.
He's right here.
Okay. Could you come up and speak? That'd be great.
Again, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Dennis McCauley, and I live in Andover. I'm not sure. Do you need the actual numbers? All right. Well, 2846, 142nd Lane. I am the representative of my mother's estate and of my brothers and sisters, and we all are in favor of doing this and changing it from R2 to R1 to simplify the sale to the Meanders here so that they can build their single-family home. In regards to the cutouts that actually put on the property referenced earlier, I believe there was a new curb and gutter put into the property about five years ago, and their assessments are on the property now. Those cutouts are actually driveways were designed by your, I assume, your engineering department and your -- I'm not sure what -- who designs those, and there was no plan in regards to where they had to be put. You decided on that. So they exist as if there were to be two homes and two driveways on the first lot, and because of the layout of the second lot, that one single cutout that is up by the top of the tree there, that would actually have to serve as a dual driveway if there were to be a double home in there. So actually now, it actually serves a better purpose of being only one.
And are you just selling them that one parcel or both?
I'm selling the Meanders, the single lot that we refer to as the corner lot. We have the builder that basically is going to build their home. He is going to be the purchaser of the second lot or interior lot.
And have you had any offers prior to this for that property as an R2 lot?
Yes and no. My mother passed away in 2014, so whether she had any offers up to that point in time, none were ever acceptable to her. But since that time, we put it up for sale to close out her estate. We have had some offers that have been fire sale reference in that context, but these are the first individuals that really stepped up and decided that they wanted to build a home and really put together a plan to do so. And actually, since they're all going to be coming into the McCauley Terrace, that actually simplifies the whole process. There wouldn't be anybody entering on McCauley Trail, and it would make it a lot easier. I believe there's a number of other streets that enter into McCauley Trail that have single-family homes on them. What is it? Schroeder Road, West Trail, I think further down McCauley Trail, and they are all our single-family homes, too, so it doesn't really disrupt the character of that whole area. When it was first plotted, all of the lots along McCauley Trail there, referencing the R2 question to begin with, it was the city council -- excuse me, it was the city manager back at that time, a gentleman by the name of Hyde, suggested that they all be R2s. And basically, my father and parents, you know, went along with the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other I can try to remember?
Okay, so this is a public hearing, too. Are there any members from the public that'd like to speak? You guys can sit down, sorry. Thanks.
Motion to close public hearing?
All in favor? Aye. So bring it back to the Planning Commission. Are there any additional comments? Go.
I think I brought this up before, just about rezoning, going to the city council if there's maybe a way we could, you know, save them the time for something like this. I don't, you know, back to the whole rules of why things are a certain way. I don't know. But maybe put that up to discussion for this. You know, I drive along that frontage road a lot. Kids go to daycare right around there, so a lot of R2 as you're heading north, but you know, as you bend around that corner, you start to enter a different area, and even just south of that, there are some single-family presence right on that road. But I support a plan that whichever it is has access off this terrace or this cul-de-sac just for safety reasons, less people pulling in and out on that frontage road. Just seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Lee?
So I think this is a very interesting application. First of all, I am surprised that it's not the property owner coming to us asking for a change in the zoning, the designation of the parcel so that he can sell it off as two separate rather than one R2. I don't know if that changes anything, but I just thought that was interesting. So in fact, we often get a lot of applications where a developer is bringing forth a proposal, but it's contingent. You know, if this group does not see fit to move forward with it, they won't move forward for it. But I think it's helpful to know that as a Planning Commission. I did want to go back to the comp plan to see exactly was there any reason why we have R2, and is R2 actually kind of an outdated designation, residential housing type? My thinking, and I don't know if it's true or not, but in some ways, it's not as valuable or looked on as desirable as a single-family home. But yet, if that's true, we are always talking about additional density, meeting different housing types, different lower price points for people to enter into the market. And if we eventually take the scenario where gradually we remove all R2s and we are just left the single families, I do think it will have an impact on the cost affordability of someone trying to get in sort of the starter, starter market or even just after the starters step up a little bit. So that was an issue. Under our land use goals, it actually had two guidelines under Land Use Chapter 4. It did say protect and preserve the essential character of the existing residential neighborhood. And we do know that there are certain neighborhoods that have been plotted with single-family as well as R2 designations. Is that part of the character? Is that something we want to maintain? I think those are the issues that as a Planning Commission we have to think about, aside from what we feel personally about this individual parcel. And again, number two, it said preserve and maintain housing that serves a range of age groups and economic situations. So that's a guideline right in our comp plan. There was a table of acreage of existing and future land use categories projected for 2000 to 2030, and there was a line item for low-density residential attached LDA. What was interesting is in 2000, it said that there were 169 -- I guess this is acreage, 169. And under planned, it showed that number decreasing by one acre by 2030. So again, interesting, but 169 to 168, I think the intent was showing that these things aren't going to go away. I don't know if that's just an assumption or if that's a recommendation, but that's in there. And then under land use policies, there was a -- number four, building on current efforts, the city will seek options that allow for single-family redevelopment that is sensitive to the community character and context of existing neighborhoods. Again, same point, sort of, is that a character or is that context worth saving? Is that what we defined as character and context? Number seven said the city will seek opportunities to increase the supply of affordable housing. And in my mind, that's not necessarily to always be building new affordable units. It's kind of retaining what we already have. From the section on Buildings, Site Design, and Interconnecting Spaces, under Guidelines for Low Density Residential, it did talk about, number three, the integration of multi-unit housing into transitional areas. So as mentioned under Character Districts Post-War Contemporary Housing, duplexes were located along many major thoroughfares in Edina as a kind of buffer or transition to the adjacent single-family housing. Today, this housing type is in need of updating or replacement in many locations, and high land and redevelopment costs create pressure for higher-density housing types. So not totally applicable to this site, but what it does say is it was seen as a transition type of housing and that it is acting as a buffer to the adjacent single-family housing. So again, if this housing type is to go away, we do have this in, maybe not so clearly in this particular spot, but other places in the city where it really is a buffer zone. So if we just say, if we say today that, yeah, sure, it's fine to always put a single-family home on any R2 lot, we have to just be mindful of the effect it may have down the road.
One more question, maybe?
Yeah.
I'm a little more confused on it than when I first came in here, but most of the R2 lots, when you look at them aerial over the property, it's dividing that one structure into two lots. Was this actually going to be two separate R2 structures?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Navarro?
I think the policy's interesting. I love talking policy, but in this case, I think it's a -- I think this is a poorly drawn arbitrary, excuse me, an arbitrary rule that R1 can't exist in R2 or single-family can't exist in R2. I think it was written poorly, and I think it's unfair of a city to enforce it against applicants. So I would be in favor of approving this and either waiving or refunding the $1,100 fee, the application fee they provided for this. I think that's the right thing to do. To the extent, with one caveat, to the extent any of that fee goes to engineering plans to create a new entrance off the cul-de-sac, I think that would be fair to retain. But otherwise, I think we shouldn't be seeing this issue tonight, and these people should not have to have gone through this process.
Jonathan? Commissioner Navarro, you just made a simple decision, Harter. I -- because I thought Commissioner Lee made a good review that there probably is reason to leave it written as it is, to not always just assume that there's not a purpose for R2 and R1 would always be appropriate. And then opening about refunding the application fee, I'm sure city staff would be crazy about that idea. You know, that is not the right thing to do. It seems to have opened another line of discussion. But I do think that, I mean, you're right. I think this is clearly appropriate use for the land here, but... It seems like we're -- this is an issue that we need, clearly, we need to resolve. Clearly, there's interesting things to discuss here. Clearly, it's important to get to a resolution. Clearly, now's not the time, and clearly, these people don't want to wait until two years from next Thursday to get there. I think those are all interesting pieces. However, I don't think now is the time or the -- you have brought this up several times before. I think we need to -- before, like we need to push.
Tonight's the first night I brought it up.
It has been brought up before. It has been brought up before. And I think we need to push it forward and, and study it and figure out what the answer is going to be, but I don't think now, I don't think we can do that tonight. And I think it's above, at least it's above my pay grade to do that.
Oh, I'm fine with that. I still, I still propose that we approve the application and refund the $1,100 because I don't think we should, even, even accepting what you said,
Commissioner. I think we can recommend that, but I don't think we can do that.
We're charging them based on our confusion of how the law's written.
I think we can recommend that, but I don't think we can do that. I don't think it's up to us to do that. I think we can recommend that it be looked at.
I recommend that we waive, that we refund the $1,100, you know, people can say that it's not, I think we, I definitely think we can approve it. Now whether that can be enforced, I don't know. I don't know, but that would be, that's my recommendation. I think, I think that we, I think the government has a higher duty to get these things more clear than what I've seen.
All right.
Can I translate that into a motion?
Sure, happy to. I move that we approve this as this variance, subject to the conditions in the staff report, with an additional condition that the $1,100 application fee be refunded to the applicants.
Is there a second? So, no second, so, sorry. Is there anyone else who wants to make an motion?
I just want to be clear on this. So this is a preliminary rezoning, so what we recommend today is going to the council and the council still needs to review it. So again, I think part of this is the comments are very important, as we've been told. And I guess I'd like to have more discussion. I am not convinced that I would vote to recommend this course of action because of the precedence it would set. And in terms of Commissioner Nemiroff, I think you've got a very good point there and perhaps it's more, more aligned with a head to a request to have the city attorney review that language and see if there's a justification to have that fee waived in conjunction with it.
And I, excuse me, Commissioner Chair, but I'm totally fine with reviewing this issue going forward and determining the language. I just think as it's drafted tonight, it's unfair to these applicants. And I don't think that, I think that we should take the financial burden of that lack of clarity, not the applicant. They, they shouldn't have to pay for us to figure this out. They shouldn't have to be here. That's just my view, my view of it. We've, city, we're a wealthy city too, so I don't think that we're going to be putting anyone out of work or, I just saw my new tax bill. So I think we should, I think we as a city should bear the risk on this one. We, and sure, let's review it and clean it up and come to a policy. That sounds great.
Right, so I think, you know, Carrie, it's been stated, you know, to have that reviewed and to have it be clarified. As far as additional comments, I also like to maintain the, you know, R2 whenever possible, but the fact that there are a lot of single-family, right? You know, it's not, I'm comfortable with this rezoning, so I think it kind of fits with the neighborhood. Commissioner Thorson?
I have to agree. I think that the intent of why we want to look at some of these R2s being turned to R1 is really to maintain more of those R2 districts. And there are some R2 districts within the city of Edina. I think the concern would be that those would just be eroded slowly over slowly. I think this is, you know, over time. This is such a different case because it's an eclectic, very eclectic housing setups around there, so it's clearly not eroding the, those R2 districts that I, this I envision when I see those, mostly R2, which is where we want to, I think, really want to protect and maintain.
Yeah, I agree with the majority of the comments that have been made so far that this is, at least in my opinion, it's pretty overwhelmingly clear that there's a lot of ground to approve this application. But I agree with Commissioner Nemirov and that what's concerning about this is the cost factor that is burdensome to the applicants. And it really just does not make any sense to me that these people would have to pay for us to review something that really shouldn't have to be reviewed at all. So I think that at the very least, there's no harm in recommending that the city cover the application fee.
And just as a comment to that too, and I'll get to it, I'm not convinced, I think the way that the ordinance is written, there might be some, you know, conflicts with the way it's written, but I think it's pretty clear that it states that, you know, R1 is not, you know, single-family is not permitted. So right now, I just don't think we have the facts to make a statement to refund everything. So go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So, so I also agree that there is value in the R2, particularly in the buffer areas, and I would be very concerned if we see that getting eroded. In this situation, it, a single-family fits in perfectly, and I think the fact that these lots have sat empty says a lot. Clearly, people aren't going to build R2s there. If they wanted to, they already would. We have a buyer, we have a seller. Why would the city stand in its way? It's in a neighborhood where R1 fits perfectly. Let's just go ahead and do it. So I would propose that we go ahead with this. Regarding the case on the zoning, I'm not in a position to vote that we do anything further than recommend it be looked at, so I would abstain if it came to that. I think anytime you can make it clear, that's great, but we all know that these things get written over time by multiple people and there can be one word in one paragraph that offsets a word in another, and so you just really have to look at it hard and we're not in a position to do that. And I would be really cautious about talking about refunding fees. I think if it comes to the case where, you know, it was proven that this was unnecessary, then let's, let's refund the fees, but we're not in a position to make that proposal.
Yeah, so I guess I should reiterate, I should have made it more clear that, like, I think there is a separation between my opinion on this and also the consideration of the application itself. Because even if it's true that there's value in the R2, at the point where there's any sort of contradiction in the legal code itself, that still should be grounds, I think, to prove that it's unfair that these people had to pay. So that's my opinion at least.
Commissioner Lee?
One more clarification. I think this is what Carrie said, and this is to Planner Teague. So there are two parcels and the way it's zoned currently, each one is R2. On each parcel, then there would be a.
A duplex.
A duplex. So that could be, so for these two parcels, that would have been four units. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move approval of the recommendation for preliminary zoning as submitted in the packet.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. So when does this go in front of the council, Carrie?
This will go to council January 3rd.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on our.
Turn here, someone look into that.
I think that that's was stated enough, right? Does it need to be a formal recommendation, Carrie, or just the fact that you've heard it?
You could, yeah. I would have Roger weigh in on it for the city council.
Okay, so you're saying you do want us to make a formal recommendation on that? Okay. Do you want to make that, Jimmy?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, so the next on the agenda is community comment. And this is the opportunity for, for anyone from the community to, thank you, come and speak. And it doesn't look like there's anyone, so we will move on to the next report and recommendation, which is a sketch plan review for the Pentagon Park North.
Of the commission, a site we're familiar, familiar with lately here, with the Pentagon Park. So this evening is a sketch plan for the North parcel. It's about 27 acres in size. The property is currently zoned mixed development district six, was rezoned back in 2008 with another development project that did not move forward. What we're looking at is the Western two parcels, 10.8 acres in size, that would be up for redevelopment. What the applicant is proposing here is to build two five-story residential buildings. The West building would be 325 units, all-age apartment, and the East building would be senior living, 225 units. To remind the commission, back in 2014, there was a preliminary rezoning for both the North parcel and the South parcel. The current owner of the Pentagon Park Hillcrest Development, they own, again, both the North and the South parcel and the Walsh Title site, which is located here. So on the screen is the approved preliminary PUD. We didn't have any specific development plans at that time, but the thinking was that there would be an office retail type use on the North parcel. It was suggested both by Planning Commission and City Council to consider residential on that North parcel as they move forward. And then the South parcel was office and retail also, and you can see there was some structured parking that was contemplated. Part of those approvals, we had this, this height matrix within it. And adjacent to the Fred Richards, well, it's labeled as, it was a golf course back then, but the Fred Richards Park, the thinking was four stories along the park and five along 77th. The South parcel allowed up to 12 stories. The comprehensive plan guides this area for 12 stories, so there's, there's no conflict with the comp plan. But the applicant is proposing five stories over the whole of that site. The zoning on this site, the zoning regulation is four stories and 48 feet, so it would be above the current zoning. To bring you back to 2008, this was what, a plan that was proposed and approved and there was final rezoning on it. That's the current MDD six. So the thought at that time was to do housing on the North parcel, kind of lower density along the park and then higher density along the street. Again, that was to be all housing. The South parcel was more, that's where all the office and retail was to be concentrated. At that time, we didn't have a PUD ordinance. The mixed development district was the closest thing we had. In the MDD district, it requires essentially a half-half split, half residential square footage and half office and retail. So that's the current zoning. The applicant has provided an overall development plan of that North parcel, though keeping in mind, they only intend to develop the 10.8 acres. One and two is labeled on the screen. What they've provided is a potential development, buildings three through seven, on how the, how the site could be redeveloped. One of the issues, as you are aware of, there is a, an east-west connection into the Fred Richards Park, so we want to make that, those entrances more prominent. And the applicant has provided two alternatives or potentially both those access points that would provide access to Fred Richards Park. City is in the process of going through the, the details of what that, how that park will be developed, so we don't have the final plans yet, but these two access points would work in that development. Thinking is this entrance could be constructed at, during this phase, could be constructed as part of what's proposed here on this 10.8 acres. So here's an aerial look of how the project would fit into the development, kind of a traditional suburban apartment proposal here with surface parking. Here's a look at what the buildings would, would look like. I'll let the applicant go through in more detail. Again, five stories. This is a look from 77th. What the applicant is suggesting here is their five-story proposal would essentially be the same height as a four-story office building that was contemplated back in 2014. Here's a rendering of a typical office, four-story office building versus the five-story residential that's proposed. So what would be required here would be a comprehensive plan amendment to increase the density from 30 units to 60 units an acre. The rezoning from MDD six to PUD, again, there was already a preliminary PUD, so whether the PUD zoning is, is justified here, that's a discussion for the Planning Commission to have and the city council as well, and a new overall development plan. In terms of code compliance with the existing MDD six zoning, really, it's just with the exception of the height and the proposed parking stalls, this would be code compliant. If you considered what's being proposed on the South parcel, this could be considered a mixed-use development, again, taking the all, all of Pentagon Park together. So if, if, under the current zoning, it would, it would meet that, given the residential that's proposed here and the office that's proposed on that South parcel. Some of the issues that staff would just like to point out and for discussion with the Planning Commission. Had some concerns over the amount of surface parking, especially along 77th here and providing pedestrian connections to the front. There might be an opportunity to provide an additional pedestrian connection on the west side to the regional trail to the north. In terms of affordable housing, it was suggested in the applicant's narrative that the affordable housing would be taken care of as part of development of the Walsh Title site, which is this property right here. That could work for the, the whole of this Pentagon Park development, but we'd need to have that clarified as part of any formal application to get the assurances that the affordable housing policy would be met. Again, kind of a theme that we've heard with the Pentagon South project, making stormwater a feature in the development. As we know, the, the high water table and the stormwater issue there, so using that as a, as a positive. So with that, I think I'll, I will stop there, open it up for any questions that you have, and the applicant is here to present the project in a little more detail.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, just want to understand a little bit of the history of, I guess, the recommended site use change over time from office to, it seems like overwhelming residential push for the whole thing, so I don't quite understand that and I'd like to just hear what, I guess, the history is of that move.
Yeah, so when, when you look at the plan here on the screen, the thought was at that time that all of the North parcel would be residential. So essentially, we're going back to that 2008 plan with what's proposed here with the more concentration of the office and, and retail uses, there was a hotel that was actually received final approval, this building A here, that was going to be the first phase of the project. And that actually received final approval, but just then 2008 happened and, yeah. So and it really, we're moving back toward that. With what was proposed back in 2014, this plan, the applicant was pushing a move away from residential, away from that 2008. And the Planning Commission and city council at that time encouraged Hillcrest, the property owner, to consider housing on that North parcel. So a little bit of the background on that.
I think maybe it's just helpful to also understand the use of that golf course has changed, I mean, significantly, where if it were a golf course, maybe a certain use makes more sense than now a public park, so.
Yeah, you know, that's a good point. As part of this project, at that time, the developer was talking about some of these townhomes that face the golf course. There was talk of building a new clubhouse as part of this development where they were going to really market the golf course with that residential project.
Thanks.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
Carrie, can you go back to that image? Yeah, that one. Okay, perfect, perfect. So as I understand it, the Walsh Title property, that's where the affordable housing will be located, but that's not part of the proposal tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we would want clarified with any formal application is how is the affordable, affordable housing policy going to be? affordable housing policy going to be?
Would that be in a future presentation, or would that be, you know, after the sketch plan comes a, you know, review process, would the affordable housing be part of the review process, or do we not have visibility to that at this time?
Well, they're not proposing anything at this time. We're suggesting that if you move forward with a formal application, you need to address the affordable housing, and they're suggesting it would be shown on that parcel. So if they come forward with a rezoning for that site, hopefully that question would be answered.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sutres?
I'm looking at the master plan sketch. It's, yes, that one, yes, thank you. So we're looking at block one and two, and to me, that would be the south end of block two with the parking lot there. City staff, you know, commented on it. Is it, so to do the parking evaluation, I mean, are you just looking at what the needs would be for one or two, or could you anticipate making up or for future, I mean, or does it, I mean, the parking that needs to be provided would be determined by what they're doing in block one and two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And are they, do you consider it overparked for, I mean, would they have to find some other place if they were to eliminate?
Yeah, so that is an issue. They're still short parked even with this parking field out front compared to what our code would require. Another issue is, you know, we want to see some kind of a shared parking arrangement with the park to the north that would, you know, shared between both the users. So that might provide a little shortage of parking, especially on nights where there's some activities in the park. So it's a difficult, it's a difficult, difficult one to solve. One thing that might be a possibility is you do this in proof of parking. It's developed as green space initially, and if they really need that parking in the future, it could be turned into parking at that time.
Yeah, it is well buffered. I mean, it is quite a bit of landscaping around it, but, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, can you just update a little bit on the Fred Richards master plan?
Yeah, so there's some draft plans out there. I probably should have included a copy of that in the staff report, but some of the fine details of that plan are being worked out in the next, well, within the next year. Hopefully, that would be finalized at that time. But park seems to be, in talking with the parks director, these general locations should meet any of the needs that they're, the plans that they're looking at. It would work for good access.
So, but it's going to remain landscaped, primarily landscaped, with no structures or anything else? It's going to be open like the golf courses currently?
Within the park, correct. There could be some ball fields, play structures, things like that, and some trails.
So the view from, to this parcel from, will be across the park to a single-family neighborhood on the opposite side?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
Yeah, related to the Pamela, excuse me, not Pamela, Richards Park. So can you go back to that image that we were looking at a moment ago, the same one? It showed the layouts of the, no, you and I were talking a few minutes ago, they had the, showed the bar property on it. Well, that's fine. So right here, okay, the H is where the senior housing will be?
Correct.
Okay, and that's right, how far is that away from where you think the walking paths will be for the park?
Well, let's see. So there would be walking paths within the park, and then you recall the regional trail goes through, well, generally in this location here. So the closest trail would be the regional trail, and there would be walking paths interior to the park.
And how far, how far away do you think it'll be? I'll tell you why I'm asking. I don't want to play hide the, it's just, the more I think about it, it's just, you know, senior housing is a wonderful thing, and I've unfortunately had tours of many of them. The nicest one that I can think of around here, in terms of facilities, I'm not recommending them as the nicest senior housing, anyone who cares, I mean, if you want my recommendation, I'll give you one, if you want one for care, but this place that gives very good care, you know, I'm not saying they're good or bad, but has beautiful grounds, is the Masonic Home down in Bloomington by the Minnesota River Valley. But it is, it's just beautiful, but it's remote from where the general public would go, and now that I'm thinking about this more, it just seems unusual to me to have senior housing near a public park, probably for a few reasons. I'm trying to think of other instances where that's actually occurred, and I'm scratching my head. I mean, I think, I think there's a few reasons off the top of my head, I'm not an expert in this, but I think one is safety of the seniors, another one is general citizenry doesn't always enjoy going by senior housing. So I'm just wondering if you, you know, I'm wondering how close it is and if you know of other places where public parks go right by senior residences.
Yeah, I can't think of any off the top of my head. I'm thinking of the Grand View area, some of that is senior housing.
Remember putting in?
There's that Pocket Park in Grand View.
Right, yep, and there's senior housing adjacent to that. I think, well, the, well, it's across Valley View, you've got the park adjacent to the, somewhat adjacent to the 6500 France, new senior housing that went in. Granted, it's across Valley View Road to get to the park.
Roseland? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, 65th and France.
Near the Aurora?
Near the hospital, the Aurora, yes.
And actually, I would argue quite the opposite, that we need more integration of generations, as well as more natural resources for everybody, and maybe it's your definition of senior housing, but I know a hell of a lot of 80-year-olds who like to walk and wish they lived closer, and so I'm not sure if you're thinking we stick everybody away, but that's not what I want to want.
I think of, I think of the Park Shore and St. Louis Park as near a park.
They should all be near parks.
I, I'm feeling kind of anti-central planning tonight, but.
Carrie, I have one, sorry. Before you sit down. I always do that to you, don't I? So one of your other comments, staff comments, was provide front door pedestrian access in front of the building towards 77th Street for the apartment building. Maybe you explained that, I might have missed it. What were you talking about?
Yeah, I was thinking this, we've got the parking lot in front, you know, we're kind of wanting to have that green space with the direct pedestrian connection out front. So this was the area I was thinking of.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. So the applicant here would like to speak.
My name is Joe McWhain. I am development manager at Chase Real Estate. I am also an architect. Very excited to be here tonight to present this, what is a significant development for our, for our office, for what is an existing 1960s-era concrete, car-oriented office park that will transform into a new residential community and really kickstart the adjacent Fred Richards Park redevelopment. So I have quite a few slides tonight, but I think I can get through them. I think a lot of things you brought up, I will get through on my slides. Let me first start with who we are. Chase Real Estate is a, is a development company that focuses on multifamily housing. We are in Burnsville. We develop, build, and with our sister company Stonebridge, which is our next-door neighbor, we manage our, all of our properties as well, and we hold them long-term. So when I say this is a significant project for us, it is in size, but it is also, we will be here for the long run. We focus on one building a year. We've been doing this for about 10 years. Before this, Chase Real Estate was one of the larger home building companies in the And we recently, I'll show you some projects in the future, or in the future slides, but we recently developed a award-winning project in St. Paul that we got recognized for last year. So here we are, our 28-acre proposal. This is, for clarification, the master development sketch plan. We did not develop or sketch this entire proposal. We are focused on that first 10 and a half acres, and that is the plan that we are proposing here tonight. We're proposing to take that 10 and a half acres from Hillcrest and develop housing. And we know that coming in, there are some significant principles that we will be following, green streets, integrated stormwater, all these that Carrie has mentioned. One of those primary factors is really unlocking the Fred. We know that it is turning into a future terrific park. Now there is a concrete border there, and the relationship is concrete to a future grass, and we want to really grab that landscaping and bring it in to the new development. And these are those principles here diagrammed. The stormwater features around the property will be landscaped. We will be providing that first stretch along our 1,000 feet of that 10 and a half acres. We'll be providing the new boulevard, which is a 10-foot boulevard of trees along West 77th, and we'll be providing that new eight-foot path, along with many more networks of sidewalks. The other principles are connection from east to west. We thought that, much like Excelsior and Ground, there's a kind of a waving of traffic or parking along that north to separate, so we can't have people driving at high speeds. It's broken down, there's lots of tree islands. But the real goal here is to make this a new pedestrian and green community. So our proposal is two complementary use buildings. We believe that a mixture of ages, a mixture of people, all types of unit types, from small to two-bedroom, and different services, we think that's the best type of community. I mean, this is a significant project that will bring in hundreds of new people and really kickstart what we think will be the Fred Richards Park coming along behind us. We have significant investment in the underground parking, and we're ready to get going. So I think this is a, I show you the image on the top to show the before and after there of a concrete 60s-era project into what we propose today. And this is taken from 77th Street. I can't fit in the whole imagery because it's such a long project, a long scope of asphalt here. This is 1,000 feet long. Now it is uninviting, it's cold, there are a lot of cars there, that doesn't mean there's a lot of activity, those are just walls or cars that are parked. But I do believe there is hope here. With the park and the connection to the new Nine Mile Creek, we're going to tear the fence down, and we're going to bring new connections to that, to that park, for our community. So I want to show you this slide for sense of scale. 1,000 feet long in a 475-feet-deep property. I know that most downtown blocks, I think, are 325 feet by 325 feet, but we are really landlocked here. So what I'm trying to show you here is, when we talk about parking needs, we don't have perimeter parking on street parking, we don't have any other drive around our property. This is a sense of scale for showing what recent project, One Southdale, looks like with the property we're proposing, 10 and a half acres. 71 France, again, just trying to show a sense of scale. And here we are, back to the site plan. Part of the parking, we are providing as part of this redevelopment, shared parking for the future park, 40 stalls that'll get people close to the future outdoor spaces and such. Let me show you the next slide. Over 5,600 new linear feet of sidewalk. So we're providing over a mile of new pedestrian paths. That's the new boulevard along West 77th. All of the perimeter sidewalks and all of these courtyards, which are over parking below, will all be landscaped. We also are, we have a dog run. Those two connections will be provided as well to the Nine Mile Regional Trail. So these will be built on part of our, our development, and will get you to the bike path and such. And here is a sense of the new green space that we're really providing. I count the courtyards as green space. I'll show you a recent courtyard we did, but those will be heavily landscaped, and there'll also be like outdoor activities. Here is some imagery about what it will be like walking around the buildings that north, the top-right image, boulevards, lots of trees, walkout units. The top-left image shows that we will be bringing the new street lighting, the new boulevard to West 77th. Our last project in St. Paul, and shown in the bottom-left, was also a development that was coordinated with the City of St. Paul Park. That was part of a 40-acre redevelopment of Victoria Park, which is along the river. We invite anyone to go and tour that property that we're very, very proud of. And the amenities, the courtyards, this is all about activity. This is, we think that this is really a complementary project to the recent investment into the new apartments in the shopping district. This is really where you can get outside when you get home. You can walk to the park, you can enjoy the outside activities of the amenities. This is really where I think you want to have your dog. And moving on to architecture, I think, architecture-wise, senior in the market-rate building, this is a view right down the middle, where we're showing lots of brick, lots of metal panel, a traditional style of architecture that we think, we want to think of everlasting, not, not any trendy style of architecture with metal panel and such, but this is really traditional styled architecture with moments, I think, at the corners, what I'm showing here, of some opportunities for some contemporary, lots of glass at the corners. I think there'll be moments where you'll see lots of heavy cornicing and arches over This is kind of a zoomed-in sketch of the entry at the apartment side, a canopy, a two-story entry. I think we want to put all the common space on that main street through the middle, so that we really activate and see the activity of the common spaces when you enter this development. We're thinking about signage, and I'm showing an Excelsior and Ground entry there. We're thinking about how, when you arrive here, it's really a sense of home and place. This is a zoomed-out image off West 77th, showing the senior property to the right and the portage chair. This is the imagery that really was the motivation behind the architecture at this point. We know, these are sketch plans, right? But we're thinking of window bays, how to bring that scale. With a five-story building, I think it's the perfect scale for base, middle, and top, for that traditional style of architecture. How do we break the roof cornicing up at the top? How are there moments of more contemporary architecture like that bottom-left image? And in the bottom-right image, when you go inside, again, rich, real materials, stone, brick, a traditional space. This is an image, a wider image of West 77th. It is just, it is a large project, and you see where I'm trying to really bring in the scale of these two-story bumpouts and walkouts. And then back from Fred Richards Park, looking back at that kind of center driveline, again, base, middle, top, lots of brick and stone and metal cornice work on the. base, middle, top, lots of brick and stone and metal cornice work on the fifth floor. Here's our preliminary plans. Like I said, we are going to, this is a mass excavation site. The soils of this property are very poor, which means we're gonna be digging and exporting a ton of soil. And because we're doing that, we might as well absorb as much of that and park as much as we can with, since we're getting rid of so much soil. It doesn't make sense to bring out back so much engineered soil. So we think we can get about 300 parking spaces below the market-rate building. The market-rate apartments will have 950 square feet average unit size, one-bedroom plus den. The green I'm highlighting are the common areas. In that corner, I think we want to emphasize connection to West 77th, so that common area of space in the center of the property and real accessible for our residents. It's not very common, but we are parking all of below the senior property. 125 of the 225 units will be independent living, so each one of those would have one dedicated stall in the basement. And a lot more common space in the senior property. This is a continuum of care proposal, meaning we have assisted living facilities, and we have memory care facilities for Alzheimer's and those with more needs. But lots of common spaces, private dining, large dining, many community resources and rooms for our residents. So one thing I want to talk about also is the scale of the courtyards. I know a month or two ago, we worked with Kerry on an initial plan. We went back and improved upon our site plan and thought about good principles for planning on courtyards. And two to one is normally a good proportion. I think we're beating that. These are large courtyards that offer a lot of opportunity for landscaping. The senior side of the building have 120-by-120-foot wide courtyards, and these will all be activated with outdoor dining and such. The top image is our St. Paul development, and that building actually had to angle back, but you'll see that there's a ton of, a ton of natural light, and that image is a little early, since that was just planted earlier this spring, but a lot of landscaping will occur. Parking spreadsheet. Who wants to talk about parking? I think your study, Kerry, was on the MDD-6, correct? So what you have, I put this into the spreadsheet to show that we are showing what we need. And what we need is, overall, comes to about 792 stalls in the bottom right. That is pretty significantly less than what current zoning shows at 963. This is a shared parking model. So really, because we're parking more below at the senior, because we have the idea of sharing the site with parks and among our community, we think we can get our parking needs with this amount. And that is further, I guess, strengthened by a recent parking study we did with our residents in our V2 apartment project in St. Paul, which will have a similar unit mix type. So here, I'm showing that what we provided were 1.6 stalls per resident. What we actually have, residents, typically there's 1.5 residents per apartment unit. So with our overall proposal of 1.44 cars per unit, I think we're gonna be right on what we need. And we also have to remember, there's tons of staff and management and property managers who also, and guests, who have to come to the property. I think Kerry spoke on height. I can answer any questions on that, on that further. One study I did do is the idea that what is adding a story like to our neighbors who are 700 feet away. So that difference is a little less than one degree. So I know that originally there were four stories up front and five in the back, but that is a very negligible piece. So it is equivalent and of holding out a pencil at the end of your arm. That is about one degree, the thickness of your pen. So we're not trying to make fun about it, but it's just a negligible amount of height. The engineering challenges here are what make this project a challenge. It is a high-water table. The 100-year floodplain is something we'll be engineering around. And like I mentioned, the unsuitable soils. But our goal, I think, versus what previous proposals have had, is to keep the buildings actually low in the ground. Previous proposals thought, okay, there's a high-water table. We need to raise these buildings and all the parking below up out of the water, out of the floodplain. But looking at this with our engineers and thinking differently at this, we really don't need to put our parking basement above the floodplain. We can berm against that floodplain. We can design a way to scoop up into the garage and then come back down, so that we never get water in the basement. Our goal is to have our front doors two or three steps off the ground. We don't want to see a lot of exposed parking, like previous proposals. Finally, our, yeah, our last project was V2. It was 197-unit, five-story building. All of that courtyard is parked below. As I mentioned, this was a project coordinated with the Victoria Park 40-acre master plan with the City of St. Paul. And we have built three phases of apartments totaling about 450 units over the last four years. And that is a picture of our two-story entry. A lot of our project, all of our projects, we do two-story lobbies. We offer many areas for work-from-home residents, office space, many clubrooms, clubrooms that people run out for Thanksgiving and such. Here's some of the interior pictures. We're really getting larger and larger with our windows and maximizing view. All of our units will have balconies. The character inside is really about woodwork and traditional, traditional design, design that is, will still look great 30 years from now. It's another project done prior to that. Again, we really think about spaces where our residents can spend during the day. And we think about our hallways as well. So, like I mentioned, we focus on one project a year. We really get into the details. These are some of our architects' precedents of what we imagine some of those common spaces being at the senior property. And with that, I probably spoke too long, but I can open it up for questions.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Do we have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Strauss.
So we're looking at block one and two, and then do you see a successive development moving three, four, five, six along a similar template then?
Okay. As I mentioned, that 28-acre, let me get back to that master plan. Too many slides.
Yeah, no.
This is part of the master developer's sketch, which we are following. Now, they have used our site plan as in this. But no, we are serious about moving forward with future properties to the east. Right now, we are focused on getting started right away this spring. But, you know, this is a significant development of 550 units. We don't know in two to three years what the market will bring. It could bring, it's really unknown. I think it is a housing. It's going to continue to be housing. I just can't tell you really what now, right now, what our plans are, because we don't have plans for these. We don't. Hillcrest may have different plans.
Could you, would you possibly see a retail component, a use in, I mean, create some sort of village or market feel or something to this?
That may be a question for the master developer. I think this is a housing site. I think we really want to activate the green space. I, I think we're gonna have residents that walk to Trader Joe's east of here. I think we're gonna have residents that want to get coffee at Starbucks and walk through the park to get there. I mean, this is a 40-acre park that's gonna bring a lot of value and a lot of great things to future residents. So I think the retail marketplace happens in Southdale, and I also think the South Pentagon, which was brought up a few weeks ago, is more that commercial zone.
I see. Okay.
But that could change, and this is a 28 acres. This could, I don't know.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you regarding access to the park.
Yes.
And it looks like, I know you're only talking about building one and two. Is the idea, I mean, it looks like if you look over further to the right between building four and five, that's more of a main artery for people who don't live in the area, like they wanted to access the park and use what you call a shared parking. But is the idea that they'd also go, like, between building one and two? And how do you, like, I'm just trying to think of, like, traffic patterns and if that works with all those people around and they're, like, driving through a parking lot?
So we have met with the Parks Board and Anne, the director. At this point, they don't know where that main connection's gonna be. We are first, really, and they're really looking for, at us to see what's gonna happen. Is there gonna be significant development that happens, so that we can now put money into drawings and seeing where that happens? We think what's shown in the dotted lines in eight are the two likely connections to the park. There could be a third. It could be the existing one. Right now, after our property, where eight leads, do you see where I moved my house? Right now, that is a low spot in the development. That is a pond. So, but that doesn't mean that that's the best location. It really is undetermined. The goal of this 28 acres is to have connection east to west, is to provide, I think it's in, all in yellow, five, yes, all of this is shared parking for park users. But the goal is to make all of this, you know, we will have easements through our property, so that all the public, everyone can drive through our property and potentially go and park where it says Parks, Parking. But at this point, it's not determined where that main connection will be. I think we'll get started, and then the inertia will start with the real planning for that connection.
Any other, Commissioner Hamilton?
Joe, a couple of things. The, you've got 1,000 feet of frontage, and you've inundated that building, so that it doesn't stretch out as a wall there. But as architects, the piece of the world that we seem to gravitate towards is the Pearl in Portland, and those are 220-foot blocks. You're showing a 500-and-something-foot block between your road. I understand that, on one hand, with, especially with that parking plinth that's underneath there, you can't accept traffic to drive over that. You just can't. But it seems like you could penetrate the buildings in some way.
Underground connection?
You can't, you can't penetrate underground, but you can penetrate, instead, let those courtyards bleed all the way through. So it's more porous to the park, and you can see the park.
Oh, I know. You're saying...
Yes. Yeah.
Remove that.
Maybe. And the height, for me, if you remove it and you say, well, I can't afford to give up those units, then don't. Just go up. There are answers. There, maybe there's ways to do it, but I ask you to at least think about that. The porosity of the site is something that you talked about, but if we could make it even more porous, I think that would be a plus.
Yeah, right now, we're thinking, here's where most of our amenity space is and lots of glass. Right now, this, there'll be glass here and a connection here, more amenity space.
Mm-hmm.
So the idea is that residents can easily flow through all these courtyards.
I get that.
But I get what you're, I get what you're saying. I know, I know of a project that does that well off Florein Park, and they keep the first floor out, and it's basically a bridge, but it's something to think about, yeah.
Yeah, think about that. You know, one of the things that, under your city principles, and this is, this is gonna be really, this is gonna be really hard, but I think we need to go there and think about how these city principles can, actually can enhance this if we amplify them. One of the things they talk about is a highlighted human activity, which I think you clearly have done, and enhanced economic vibrancy. Well, that means that these people not only need to be here, but they need to spend money here. They need to hire people here. I think the senior care does that. I wonder if the apartments do that. I wonder if there's a mixed-use piece at least can touch on inviting other people to the site. If there's a way that you can at least say, as a front door, there's a park back here, you could stop here, you could get a sandwich here and go off to the park. You could, you could open up your cafeteria, perhaps. There's a way, maybe, that you can think to say, of the amenities that we have here, we can share some of them, and in sharing them to the community, we can invite the community through the facility and into the park. Think about that.
Yeah, I can comment on that, John. I think, our senior project will be very welcoming. We'll have a lot of guests for people visiting.
Yes, you will have a lot of guests.
And a lot of those spaces will have spaces where the public meet. We'll have a deli. It'll be an indoor deli, but places where we can dine outside. But as a mixed-use, if your question is mixed-use...
It may only be a gesture, but it's a gesture that reaches out to the street and says, come this way. Come here. Come in.
And that's what I hope to do with that, those signage and the idea of having the common spaces and all the glass on that main boulevard center. Feasibly, though, there isn't a market for mixed-use. We've opened one.
I hear you. I hear you. And I'm not...
You mean as a gesture.
As much as I'd like to argue, I get it. I would really like to say, you know, if we could put mixed-use in here, it would, I think it would enhance your property and certainly the community's interaction with it. I understand that we can't do that thoroughly, totally, if we can, to the degree that you can, think about it. And probably the last piece, if it makes any sense, is the land-use livable precincts. Talks about a come-to-and-stay-at places focused on human activity and linked to an engaging public realm. Well, that just emphasizes the pieces that we just talked about. You know, a come-to-and-stay-at. You've got the stay-at piece down pat. How do you get to the come-to? How do you draw people in, other than on your senior site? What might that be, to do that? And the last one, Edina residents will be offered the perfect balance of an urban location in a natural setting. The downside to Edina is probably what its upside was in 1954, when the city got built in about six weeks. The, all the neighborhoods are little pockets that are silos that turn into themselves, and they don't turn out. They bury the parks. Fred Richards is an example. It's buried. If you know it's there, you can get there. If you don't know it's there, you couldn't find it with a compass. And that's true, that Southdale, we're working on the Southdale Small Area Plan, and more than drivers there, is that Southdale was Edina's only living room. It's the only piece that brought you out of your neighborhood to meet the real world. One of the things that this seems to create, again, is a silo. It's a senior care silo. It's a, it's a apartment silo. It's a silo that says, it's a great place to live if you happen to live here. You've got the amenity of the Fred. You've got good stuff for you. But that doesn't make it, what did we call it, an urban location, which is everything that invites everybody to be part of it. Which leads me to the last piece, which is probably, this is the third last piece, but if you had been taking notes along this, it's the third last piece. And it's about affordable housing. And the affordable housing needs to be here, not somewhere else. It needs to be about all of us, not about some of us, I think.
Let me comment on the come-to aspect. I think we're gonna complement what happens at the Fred well. One has to happen. I don't think the Fred's gonna happen until they see significant redevelopment happen. I think that may start with us. And what they have planned for at the Fred, if you've seen what happens, are a lot of community spaces. I know they're talking a beer garden or such. So I think a lot of those come-to places are gonna happen at the Fred. So I think a lot of those come-to places are going to happen at the Fred. I'm not going to say that we're not welcome, but I guess I'll give you, when we developed V2 and we had our neighborhood meetings, everyone wants a coffee shop at every new market, great housing project. They always ask, people always ask, why isn't it a mixed-use property? Where we met was in a coffee shop three blocks from our project. There's something powerful about coffee shops, but a coffee shop three blocks away to put in our apartment building just wouldn't work. Someone wouldn't do it. I guess what I'm saying is, well, one, we also have free coffee for all of our residents, but we dream of all these things. I think every new apartment building may not make sense to have a mixed-use component. I think that's going to be provided by all the great things that is planned for the Fred and the new community rooms and buildings.
You're going to have a cafeteria for the seniors, I'm just saying, just think about it. I'm not, you know, I don't want to design it, that isn't what our job is here. But if the cafeteria for the seniors, where you have coffee for everybody that's there, and there was a way that somebody could come in and say, oh, I'm welcome here, I can come in and look around, I could sit down at a booth, I could get a cup of coffee at your, not mine, not public, but your cafeteria that you've already got here. Can that work? Can you look at pieces like that? Is there a way that all the amenities that you're offering here can be as opened up to the rest of us as they can be? Because almost everything else in Edina is closed, and it isn't urban. It's a private neighborhood, more private houses, and what we're trying to create is a city that's more urban, not less.
I understand. That's why one of our main goals is, let me show you this image again, is to make this a walkable, porous site. So we're going to focus on all those sidewalks, and I think we'll think about how we can show some views of what it feels like here with the street lighting, with the landscaping and the sidewalks, where everyone's welcome to see and walk by and feel like they're part of an active community. So that's something we'll look at. Regarding the affordable housing component, this is part of a master development, and we wouldn't be putting in this much time and significant investment if we weren't so confident that the master developer was providing affordable housing as part of this redevelopment. So we know that our project is contingent on affordable, we know that the affordable component is contingent on us going forward because we're kind of the first one who's ready. Affordable is always a slower process with the bond markets and such stuff that I don't fully understand, but we're ready to go, and I think a lot of stuff will follow the Fred and the affordable component adjacent to us.
Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think these are fine buildings, your presentation's fine. I would share with, I think with Commissioner Hamilton, I got one question for you, but I would, I like, Commissioner Hamilton is obviously a, you know, just a leading person in the field of construction and design and architecture and got a lot of just bright insights. So I'm not going to repeat everything he said, but I do want to just state the idea of increased height. I think, I want to have a question for you, I think I'd be totally fine with that in return for a trade-off for more visibility of the park. The question I have is, and I don't know if it was answered earlier, we got sidetracked, how far are these buildings from the park? The only hesitation I have with height in this location is to the extent that the height would impinge on the enjoyment of the park. So do you know how far the park will be from the buildings?
Well, I show the property line quite narrow here, but I have to provide enough space for the water, because I have to keep the 100-yard flooded bay. So I would say 30 feet here is kind of the, what I need. And then I have a 60-foot perimeter drive and lane, and then I have another 20-foot setback so that people aren't right on the sidewalk.
110 feet, you're thinking?
Yeah. Which I think is significant, but let me show you. I can show you a slide, though, that is provided by. Can you see this on your monitor, though? You've got to remember, though, that the, what's happening at the park is quite lower. So their goals are also to have a berm of trees and such a natural setting so that when you're down and sunk into the park, you're kind of in an oasis and surrounded by landscape. And you kind of already are, it is very hard to see the existing buildings when you walk on Nine Mile Trail.
Thanks. You know, with that kind of setback, I think, and I'm not the expert on these issues, I think I'd be fine with additional height, probably, possibly, meaningfully additional height in exchange for greater visibility of the park. But again, I'm not an expert on the right ratio between setback and building height, and I know you have your own separate issues regarding construction.
Well, it's a new construction type. The higher you go, it's a different construction type, which means more and more concrete foundation, concrete-first floor, which then we're working against the odds of bringing in more suitable soil. And we can't build two grounds, two layers of underground parking because then we're in the water table, half of our second floor. So that's why I pinpointed the parking. I think we can still work on the perimeter parking closer, but that's why there is a density maximum that can kind of happen here. I don't know if we can go eight stories, because I don't, we don't want to build two stories of above-grade parking, look at that.
I think your comments make sense. I mean, I can't, I can't say, oh, no, I would, you know. I had a few, a few different kind of questions, and these might be just more, a little more abstract. Interest rates went up today. To what extent could that impact your project? And it would forecast to go up again.
Like, three more times, yeah. That's a good question. That's a question for probably Ms. Andy Chase.
Okay.
I think, well, one, interest rates, when they go up tomorrow, see, they've risen three times in the past year, but the market actually went down. Home interest rates went low. It's not always a direct correlation. Consumer Market Index is coming out later this week. There's other variables. We might see lower interest rates through spring. It's really a no.
Again, I think everything you say makes sense to me, thanks. We see a lot of multifamily housing come before us, and we see very little office. Last session, we actually saw office on that other property, that was probably one of the first offices that we'd seen in a while. What does your company do? I know Chase from residential and perhaps commercial leasing, but do you guys do also commercial office construction? Are you more multifamily?
It's been multifamily the last 10 years, and before that, it was 2,500 single-family homes. I mean, it's been about developing communities. In our office, too, is land development, Lake Elmo, we do some single-family lots. We do own a couple commercial buildings, but it's not ground-up stuff. It's not our place. I mean, Andy and myself, we know how to build apartment buildings, and that's what I've been doing, you know, he's been doing forever, so that's our focus.
Very fair. Thank you. Those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How many questions down on the side? Comments, okay, questions? Actually, this is, you know, you can stay there, but Carrie, I think this kind of goes back to you, actually. So one of the actions here is a new overall development plan, and so will we then be approving that plan that's been shown? Is that the overall development plan? Are we seeing that now?
Well, that's their, that's their sketch plan version of it, but if they were to make a formal application, yes, we would, we need the overall development plan.
Okay. And then the piece of property where the affordable housing was proposed, is that part of this overall?
It would have to be if that's going to be where the affordable housing goes, correct.
Okay. Great. Do you have some? Go ahead, Commissioner.
So this is a sketch plan review, right? Okay. All right, well, I'll just sketch plan, I'll make some comments, I guess. Again, that affordable housing would have to be part of it. I can't see putting any backing behind a proposal that doesn't include that. Your green connection, so I think it's all timing. If you're saying that you're going to develop this parcel, I think that green connection which shows on parcel two, I think that almost has to be incorporated into part of this proposal. So there are elements of that I really like. I think it could be made very pedestrian-friendly there. I'm not sure I'm in agreement that the seven is the right location for the pedestrian. To me, it just feels like it's with the cars. So that bothers me a little bit. You mentioned that you're trying to bring that green in from the Fred, but I almost feel like you started with the parameters of a concrete jungle and sprinkled in the green. So just take your mind, get your head around it, and say, if this were a completely, you know, new site, start with how would you mimic the Fred? Then look at where do those buildings feel like they want to be, and what could I create for a nice additional park environment to lead up to that? I think that might start influencing some of your layouts ever so slightly, but it should make a difference. The height of it, I think that you're in the right zone, but I understand, too, that it feels very monolithic. You know, whether it's a monolithic dorm building, or a monolithic apartment building or office building, it has that form that feels very chunky. And I know that you're after, you're really trying to get that base feel to it, maybe some type of step back, you know, a podium-type of thing, if you're really trying to emphasize it. It's just so monolithic right now. And just break up the massing, which is essentially what Commissioner Hamilton was saying, is if you can get buy-in to some more of that porosity to see-through, that that would be a great thing, and maybe there's a way to do the additional height in just certain parts of it and not the entire building. So you're not going to stack exactly the same floor plate everywhere, but you're really going to look at, where is that height really going to help me so that I can create those views? The materials, you know, I'm finding some of these buildings to all start to look the same, so maybe I'd just ask, what can you do to say, this is the Fred Richards building? You know, and just start with that, because this looks a lot like one of your other, and you did say, I mean, you're pretty upfront about it, but it looks like your other project in St. Paul. So I'm not sure it needs that many different materials. I like the aspect of the cornice, that traditional feel to it, like the classic feel, I should say, that you're after, but I didn't see it everywhere on the building. So where you lost that, it kind of started feeling like, ah, there's just another apartment development. So that's just how it hit me. Let me see.
Can I get a clarification, Carrie and Susan? You had mentioned another connection? You had said something number two. Are you talking about a connection over here?
No, I was talking about, you had something as a number three, it was green, green connections or something on one of your drawings, your plans, yep, that was it.
This one?
All right, see that green connection? But that looks to me like that's coming in, yeah. That, what you did on phase two, it's more that type of connection that feels more pedestrian because you did not have to pull in cars as well. So there's something that's more appealing about that one, as far as drawing in pedestrian movement.
Over here.
Yeah. Yeah. And then the last thing was, I think that those courtyards are really starting to get to that feel, you know, and I appreciate the fact that you explained sort of the width of it, so they are significant. Again, I think it's more about making the assumption that this is the Fred, you know, and in fact, we're going to make this more of the Fred and start from there, and then I think that that shape of what that courtyard should be will really start to come out and influence what the building will be. I think that's what you really need to get that activation. Right now, it kind of feels like just a way to cut through there and, almost as if it was an afterthought, although it's not, I know it's not, but it feels that way. So I think there's something missing as far as maybe the initial approach when you decided where those had to be.
You're talking about this approach?
Pardon?
You're talking about this drive approach here?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I will comment, I think that we did have this building rotated so that you could see more of the courtyard and see more of that green space. I think if I were to show you five vertical rectangles, I don't, I don't think that would be appealing. I think we're going to play around with, and we talked about this today, how, where these depths, where they move. But what we noticed when we rotated this was, one, talking about urban design and having a building closer to the sidewalk, we wanted more of a presence of one of these buildings having more of a presence off West 77th versus seeing building courtyard, building courtyard. That looked too repetitive to us. So we have gone through many plans, and we'll continue to work on some more.
Pieces as they face the main street and the Fred begin to look more like city blocks. And if you turned it, I'd be interested to see what that perspective might look like. If you turn the senior living back, the H-back, so the legs were down, and look at it as streets and apartments that fit in city streets, and if that scale, what that scale did. I understand what you're saying, certainly from an aerial point of view, and certainly from looking at this plan, it would be very repetitive. It would have a Soviet look to it. But I wonder if on the street, if you could make it appear more like an urban, a city block. Sorry, Susan.
And that's the challenge of sometimes showing stuff in aerial, because I know I would get hit on by surrounding parking lots, which was the goal of showing context of, normally, there would be streets around this size of development. And we need fire truck access around these buildings anyway, so.
Okay, did you have more comments, Susan, or you're done? Okay, great. Go for it.
Three comments. First off, I encourage flexibility in looking at affordable housing. I think I've said this before, and I continue to say it, I don't think the affordable housing solution is necessarily, we have X number of units we need to get, that's the count we need to achieve, we will achieve it by doing it all with studio or one-bedroom apartments. I think the root need of affordable housing goes beyond just having units, it's about making it livable for families, and I don't think families that we're trying to appeal to live in an affordable way in Edina want to live in apartment buildings. That's my general comment. I don't know what the solution is. If I had one, I would tell you what it is. But I would encourage anyone that comes to us with affordable housing to think about a little more creatively, we're going to carve, other than we're going to carve out X percent. And I don't know how receptive that's beyond me, or how receptive it is within the City Council, but I think just holding a strict number limit doesn't really solve, I think, get to what we want to achieve in the affordable housing policy. Comment number two. I always worry when I look at a property this size, and it's being converted to one use, or it's intended for one use. So I would always, you know, I would caution and would look to see the property this size that there is some diversity of use, so it's not just all residential, because that seems to me to become monolithic. And I think, once you start embracing the idea of mixed-use, you can really do effectively parking and shared parking. So that's why office and residential tends to pair pretty nicely together, you can share parking and address some of those other issues. So when I look at the entire 28-acre site, and I say, well, we all want, it all should be residential, I get a little bit worried. And then I also get worried because that's a whole lot of residential going into one quadrant that, you know, residential's hot now, but, you know, that cycle will turn. My third comment is, I kind of find this project unremarkable and very, very suburban. You know, I've been on the planning commission almost three years. One of the reasons I joined is I think this Pentagon Park is probably the most underrated, underappreciated economic development opportunity for the city, and I don't think this gets that. It is suburban, and there, I'm not an architect, but it looks like a bunch of buildings I see in Eden Prairie, looks like a bunch of buildings I see in Bloomington, and those are the two cities I've been in recently, but it's very unremarkable. So if I take a piece of property that I view as exceptional, one of the last truly undeveloped big swaths of land in Edina, and say, we're going to plop a suburban-style development in here that just kind of fits in there. I in here that just kind of fits in there, I just don't see it. And I actually look back, and we were reflecting on the 2008 plan, where they had tuck some row houses or townhomes up against the, up against the park. I thought that was just a fascinating idea, a way to just really break that up, and instead having the gigantic mass of buildings, doing something different. So for me, and I'm probably one of the more flexible people, I just don't, I don't get excited about this project, and I think we can do better. And I think one of the challenges is, it's a 20 acres, 20 acre site, and we're going to do it in three swat, three pieces. So maybe your piece works, and that's, you're doing your job and what you need to achieve, and then along comes the next guy. What do they want to achieve? And I think that's where we're seeing a failure to get this property developed as one big piece, which is truly the potential, instead of three or four other pieces, ignoring completely this southern property, because that's on its own. But I think this property is the one that really needs something, really could be spectacular. And I, please don't take this personally, I just don't see it with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
What I, I think you address the working principles as well as any project, you know, I've seen in here. I think you've really hit a lot of these principles. The idea of getting this going, I really think there's some compelling part to this project getting underway. I maybe don't quite share some of the architectural concerns. As far as working with the park design, the Fred Richards, I have a feeling that the city's going to wait to see what happens here, and their design is going to follow the development. I just expect that's kind of how that's going to shape. I don't think you're going to be, and, you know, they're going to be in front of this project. Yeah, I would like to see this get underway, and I do believe that those subsequent blocks will develop according to what the market says. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Just a couple of quick comments, and maybe not. But, yeah, I echo a lot about what Commissioner Hamilton, and what he said, just about the massing of the buildings. And if Commissioner Hobbs was here, he'd probably say the same thing about, as much as he said with these different materials, this kind of thing is just becoming this oneness that we're seeing around the South Hill area, with maybe too many materials and just a lot of different things going on, but this, it just looks more like this block of big mass, even though there's steps in, you can't see through it, like Commissioner Hamilton noted. So whatever can be done to just address that. And to kind of echo what Commissioner Thorson said, when I first looked at this plan, even just for one and two, it was similar to the one we saw a couple of weeks ago, where, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't get a wow from it. It was changed by your presentation. Clearly, you and your group have, you know, thought out a lot of things and have a passion to making a really great community for people to live at, so I commend you for a great presentation, and just at least helping me be more comfortable with just housing right there. But, you know, when I look at this image and just see all of what could be the same thing, that does make me nervous, and I think there's a power in diversity, and whether, like we said, if this is just residential, maybe that makes sense, but, you know, I just feel like this process is kind of at a loss by not doing this all together, or having the whole thing be, you know, another PUD that really works together organically and doesn't just serve as a great thing for the people that use it or live there, but for the people that are surrounding it. So we were bringing in a lot of people from the community into that Fred, and I do, I don't get a wow from, this is a lot of frontage to the Fred, and it does seem like it just doesn't, it won't draw anyone in or across from the south. And that's, that's, again, my point is, just connections from 77th, if people are driving by, like, you continue to not see what's back there. And maybe that's with signage and with some really cool integration of a gateway aspect into the driveline to enter it, or maybe it's with getting some other use along that corridor that people go into, kind of like Excelsior and Grand, where there's some sort of retail commercial aspect to draw other people in, so you kind of just have this natural flow. Otherwise, I feel like it's just lost back there, kind of like the golf course was, that no one knew about unless someone invited you to it. And then, I guess, one technical question. I saw that, you know, you kind of matched the footprint of the parking with the senior housing structure above. Is there a thought to just enhance the parking under there, to kind of free up that parking along the front, to just have the parking underneath a big square, and just have more robust columns support the building up?
Yeah, if we have to expand, we're still thinking about that. There, all the senior properties, there's so many guests and services that, you call it a port de chaire? Is that what it's called? I should know. I think that can also look very grand. I think we can make it architecturally look very beautiful. It's something that will have to happen at this project. We originally had it on that middle aisle, but then we thought, it doesn't make sense to have the entry, you know, off, up the middle of the street. Wayfinding, especially for that group, just wouldn't work, so that's why we moved that to the front. Now, can we, I don't think the overall master plan shows how many tree islands and landscaping we've done to the effect. I think I need more site renderings to help you understand really how landscaped it is, but yes, we're going to keep improving what we have.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're already burying the parking, it just seems, you know, if you're doing it, make it a big rectangle, and just, even if you shape the building above differently, you should be able to have some flexibility there. And then that just frees up that parking, so. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to the buildings coming even closer to 77th a little bit to have even more green space between, if you're really trying to bleed that park into the, you know, this property. And then I guess, another specific idea that we've seen is kind of those open bridges, so like, you know, the first floor of one of those courtyard backs, backstops is just open through, so not all of them, but, you know, one or two, so then you can at least, someone walking by or driving by has another reason to kind of see-through to what could be back there. That's it for the comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Burvey?
I also wish that we could see this, the whole, the whole area together, and I know, you know, that's not your decision, but...
You mean the whole 28 acres?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's really unfortunate, because that's, you'd feel like, then you could really be strategic about planning and knowing it's not just going to be a bunch of boxes of units. I think, though, that for this piece that you do have control over, I think you've done a good job of meeting what we've said we've been looking for. It does feel like it's a really prime piece that can be pretty significant, you know, for future development around the area. So it's not a wow, but it's sufficient. I think one of the things that would make it more appealing to me is to see, it would also feel a little bit more pedestrian-oriented, to have few of the right angles on the sidewalk and a lot more meandering. And maybe when you get into the details, you see that more, but we don't really see that from here. And like the way there's a little bit of meandering in the parking, in the street area against the park, but, you know, maybe do more of that and more significantly, so it feels like it's a park and not just, you know, and that would be a little bit more of an extension of the park, maybe. I guess that's it. Thanks. Oh, and bike paths. We need bike paths. So you're biking in and out of the park, and I kind of through this area.
Do you have any more comments? Any more comments? Do you have some comments? No comments? Wow, that's, really? Two of you guys, huh? Okay, well, I've got some. I guess I've been hearing, agreeing with what's been said tonight, and, you know, we're, just to let you know, we're not picking on you. We did the same thing with the site that was to the south a couple of weeks ago. Same thing, we just really kind of see Pentagon Park as having some real potential, and I guess we're just really open to go for it, you know, and not just come in with something kind of, you know. It is a little suburban-looking and kind of just typical, so, yeah.
Can I ask what that means, suburban-looking?
Well, I think...
Is it because of the way we look at site plans and that we see perimeter parking? Is that what it is? Or is it the architecture?
It might be the architecture.
So what...
Both, yeah.
Because I'm trying to, do we all agree that Excelsior and Grand is a beautiful, timeless project? I mean, that is the goal, that style of architecture.
Not necessarily.
No, oh, there's, see what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I know. Everyone's got their opinion.
Like what Todd had said, we may have 10 people in the room, we may have 15 opinions on design.
Different opinions, right.
John probably knows that.
Right. But I think just, again, not being so, it's all kind of similar-looking and mix it up and, you know, break it up a little bit more, and, like we've also been saying, show that connection to the park. We also want to see some connectivity, you know, to the south, so that the south Pentagon Park parcel that's coming in, that's going to be where there's going to be maybe some commercial and, you know, hopefully retail and stuff, too. So we want to be able to look at, again, 77th and some protective pedestrian crosswalks, because people are, if this is just housing, they are going to want to go across the street to where that is. So I think we need to, you know, work with the city on how this development provides some of those safe connections across 77th. Let's see. I really agree, too, that we want the visual and the physical connection to the Fred Richards Park. And so I, you know, this is so much more beautiful than what's there today, but again, it is still kind of cuts it off, and it's, you know, it's an opportunity. Other than, I'm not just going to repeat, I kind of agree with what most of the commissioners said. You lost your chance. Go for it.
Yeah, I just sort of want to second what was just said. I think that a lot of proposals that we see on the planning commission are trying to meet similar goals that this one is, or at least that's sort of the goal that the people think they're trying to meet, is that things like apartments and senior housing. And so what I've started to notice is that more and more of these proposals are looking more and more similar, similar types of architecture, similar types of the way they include green space and pedestrians and bikers. And I think a lot of that is a positive thing. I think that there's a lot more mindfulness as far as a lot of things that should be included in buildings like this one, but I think that just because something like this may have worked on Excelsior, doesn't mean that it would, this exact same style would necessarily be as fitting right next to the Fred Richards. And I think that, I do really like what you're doing with sort of the bleeding into the park, and I just want to see that ideally taken even a step further, because I think that this is really just such a prime piece of real estate. And I really liked, or, you know, acknowledge what Mr. Hamilton said earlier about how all of these parks in Edina are buried, and this is just such a rare opportunity to allow this openness to the park and allow really a window for the community to enter into this park and create that these nodes that we're always talking about, sort of in the scope of the comprehensive plan. So I guess I would just say, don't be afraid to make it unique to Fred Richards and to really think outside the box as far as including people from the community inside of it. But with that said, I think it really is a beautiful project, and I do like the, a lot of the steps that you guys have started to take.
And then just my final comment, too, is just, again, emphasizing affordable housing. So, you know, our hands are a little tied, because I think we keep requesting the city to give us, you know, provide a little bit more guidance with affordable housing. So if people choose to instead, like, you know, put money towards it instead of constructing on their site, we just don't have a lot of, is anything happening with that? A little bit more...
Yeah, the foundation is looking at beefing up the policy to address the owner-occupied. You know, we're starting to see more condominium-type proposals, so they've been working on that.
Okay.
But you're right, the policy, it's designed intentionally to be flexible. I think the goal is to provide the actual units...
Right.
...within a development is the first choice.
Right. So with that, you know, I agree, I think that you need to provide, I think with each, you know, proposal, each development, I think we need to meet those requirements on this site, so I would support that. That's all I've got. Do you have any other questions or clarifications?
No, I don't. I think this has been constructive, and I think we're going to go back and continue to improve and work on getting it to wow. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, I'm assuming no correspondence or petitions, so I'm jumping right to chair and member comments. Anything, anything to report since we last met?
I can do a Cahill update.
All right, yeah, because you guys had your thing.
We had our first community workshop on the 70th and Cahill this last Saturday. We had really good attendance, we had about, somewhere about 65 attendees, and then another 15 to 20 with the working group and staff and consultants. So it was a full room. People were engaged and excited, and I didn't see any, I'm not aware of any particular flashpoints or hot points that came out, but people were engaged and right till the end. So it's the, that was the first of three. The second one and third occur in January, and then February, we'll be wrapping that up, so. Susan, did you have any? Okay, that's it.
I just was going, before we get to staff comments, I guess, one of the things I was just going to maybe, again, suggest, and I know we're all really busy, and we don't all have maybe a chance to read through the packet in detail before we get to the meeting, but I think if, if we have some questions, like ahead of time, like the question that you had tonight with the R1 and R2 zoning, I think it would help if, you know, we could give staff a heads-up, if you've got the time, I mean, if you've seen it ahead of time versus it coming to you tonight, but I just, then...
I agree. I send a lot of questions to staff usually. I, it was just, I didn't realize. Being, being on the planning commission is my entire experience with the zoning rules, and I'm pretty sure that somewhere online, I was told that R2, you could build R1, and I asked what the statute is, and I didn't hear it. So I agree with you completely, so, but I didn't realize until tonight that you, the meeting started, that you couldn't, so I could not have asked that question in advance. Thank you.
I'm at fault with that, too, but I just know that staff appreciates it if they can get a chance to respond, versus going, ah, ah. All right, do you have any? Go ahead, Su.
I was just curious, because I know that we had a work session last week, comprehensive plan check-in with the city council, and I think, was it this week that the draft plan?
We got it today.
Excellent. So what's the next step, then? What will happen? Next date, or what's the timeline from here?
We're doing our edits, everybody in the group is going to do their edits, and get it back to the group a week from, I have to look at my calendar now, I think it's a week from Monday. Don't quote me on that.
Christmas Day.
No, it's not Christmas. I need to look at the calendar. We just got it today.
Since we're talking about process improvement, several months ago, privately, I asked that the relevant statutes or ordinances be included in our packet, and I guess now I'll ask that publicly, because that may have sparked the question. So if there are, I just think that's a good practice, actually. Here's the statutes that are applicable to this issue. So if that could be done, that could be helpful, too.
Something that can be done?
We can. We can.
Well, we understand it. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Jimmy?
Yeah, you know, this, this last thing just keeps staying on my mind. And I don't know, you know, Carrie, you deal with all these conversations before it gets to us. And I don't know what it would take for something like this to be more integrated into an overall development plan that seems, I don't know. Like, we have such a huge opportunity. And sometimes this happens, where one part of a site is developed and then we're left to guess. And it's up to what the market decides. And then now it leaves you with these disconnected things. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from. And I think we just saw that illustrated in who proposed to us or provide that sketch plan tonight is, like, is a really good example of just housing. And that's what they were tasked with. And, you know, they only could do so much with, and I don't know what kind of encouragement can happen on the city's behalf during the planning phase. I know you guys are just subject to what they're pushing. But I don't know how we can kind of figure that out better, or if that's what we're hoping the comp plan kind of does this next go-around.
Yeah, this is a, this is a really difficult one. You know, back, when you go back to 2014, that's the way they presented it. We're going to do this, you know, it's going to be a complete development. We're all going to be wowed by it. But it just didn't happen. Maybe the lesson learned is we shouldn't have approved an overall development plan without really knowing what any of the phases may or may not be. Yeah, so it's a challenge. We're kind of stuck with that MDD six zoning from 2008, which really requires the mixture of uses, but it's over the entirety of the site. So when you put Pentagon North and South together, it accomplishes that. We're almost back to that original plan, although the housing is very different. So, yeah, this is a challenging site.
I know, especially in a site like this, that's going to be kind of trunched out in a number of phases. I don't know if anywhere else, I would be comfortable hearing, well, this is how we think it could go. And here are some possible options for the second and the third blocks. But we don't know. But I think it seems somewhat disingenuous to just take, well, we are going to do these two buildings and then just, they just paste them in around the rest of the site.
Yeah.
Because to me, the saying, we're doing, it's their property, they're welcome to propose whatever they want with that property. But certainly, I would like, given the awesomeness of this property, I'd like to see more, like, the more thought going into, we're just going to develop this third, this third, and this third. And even if it's, well, we could do office here, we could do a hotel here, we could, there's, I'd be comfortable hearing some of the potential. And I know that might make other people more uncomfortable that want to hear concrete plans. But I'm, you know, I understand it's a 10-year build-out. What else could go there, rather than, let's just paste the exact same buildings around the rest of the site?
The economic development piece that you brought to the South East Small Area Plan and that was discussed there, that talked about millennial demands for the office environment they want to work in and the combined, the need for the amenity that multi-use buildings, broad, all those arguments are there. And the piece that I'm amazed about, you know, we know them, we read them, we believe them, it's their money. If they want their projects to be successful, the way to make them successful is to do all the stuff we were asking them to do. And yet, and yet, our hands are tied in saying, really, it is your land. We can't tell you what to do. But my goodness, would you rather make money or just kind of break even? And I'm mystified about how to move the ball down the field. It doesn't, I don't see that we can't give them the development one-on-one course. If you want your project to be successful, then you need to do these things. And yet, that's what seems to be necessary. Help me.
How is it that we didn't have to have a small area plan for Pentagon Park?
Yeah.
It almost feels like that.
There was a, an A U A R that was done back in 2008, and it's been updated, you know, where we examined all the different uses. But it was more an exercise in use rather than a specific developing the, developing the site.
I guess, you know, for me, for what, you know, there's an existing use that was there. That's more of the office side. And Ians mentioned it a lot of times. And, you know, I never really thought about it until he really stressed it. But, you know, it doesn't seem like we, as a city, are doing that great of a job to attract awesome corporations or places for people to work. We do in some areas, but like, here's an example of, we encourage the opposite of it. I mean, I, like, for an, to be able to work right next to Fred Richards Park, I mean, who wouldn't want to have that be a place to work? And how prime that would be to mix. So now it's like, you already took, you know, this property, although it's not all of it, I mean, it is a considerable border to that park. Because if that Fred Richards site is staying is for the parking and the structure, I mean, this is like prime real estate right on that park front. And we've just, it seems like we've arbitrarily just gone one way toward, hey, let's get housing there to just jumpstart the development of the park. And how short-sighted can that be?
Well, and that was, that's a good, excellent point. That was part of the idea of the 2014 approvals. We'll approve this master plan. Now developer can take that to the, to the development world to try to entice business into develop around that plan. It just didn't happen.
What you're seeing are the only people that are willing to spend money on that site. And that's the proposal that they gave you.
Yeah. Well, yeah, anyways, it seems like we're just up, you know, up against the product of constraints, you know. From what we heard even from this, you know, five stories, it's a limit of stick construction. So, you know, what do we want, a difference of what's urban? You know, urban is also height a little bit. So breaking up that mass vertically to afford more footprint. So, I mean, there's a lot that could be done here. And I know we're, I'm coming back to the sketch plan, but it's just, I don't know, this is such a huge opportunity. It's hard to just let go of right now.
I give them credit, though, for working with the parking. It sounds like as much as they can. I don't know the details of the water table and all that kind of business. But at least it's not a bunch of surface parking like it's been for ever.
Just a question for Carrie. What's the timeline for our work plan? Because I had asked about some items, and you had suggested potentially this is something you might add to a discussion piece to be added to our work plan. Can you just refresh my memory when that process takes place?
Yeah, the work plans have been approved by the city council. So if you have a suggestion to add something, it needs to be a recommendation from the commission that we bring forward to the city council to add to the work plan.
Okay. And we usually review that work plan in, when? September?
Oh, we start summer, yeah. August, September-ish.
Okay. All right, thanks.
No. This is our last meeting of the year.
Not until next year? Susan, I'll just go back to answer your question. I found this in my notes. The small area plan is due December 21st. There's a week from tomorrow.
And that-
The comments, the comments are back to the-
The work group's comments.
Yeah.
And then from there, what happens? Does they, does it go back to the consulting team to incorporate?
Then, then they kind of work through the comments and all that kind of stuff and see where there's commonalities, you know, where, and then we were going to meet again and kind of walk through where there might be differences and kind of have everybody see where the differences are and see if we can figure out, you know, where to take it next.
So the work group just meets one, will probably meet one more time in the new year? I'm guessing not before then.
No.
It's Christmas. And then, I'm just trying to remember, because I know obviously we're going to be heading down that same path. Does, at that point, if there's some consensus, you've reviewed it again, then it becomes kind of out there for public review. So that would probably not happen until late January, I'm guessing, to expect the earliest some type of draft for public review.
That's reasonable.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe it's just a feeling, but from some of the progress we've seen and the hiccups along the way, I mean, a week from now until next Thursday to get it right is probably not going to happen. I mean, there's probably going to be, we got it right before this meeting, right, is this evening?
Yeah, we just got it today. And actually, that's just sending our edits back. We won't even see anybody else's edits. We're just sending our own edits back.
So there'll be a considerable amount of work, I'd imagine, that the consultant team would have to readdress. And I don't, I mean, we don't know what that back and forth looks like. But talking to Carrie Wooddale-Valvee was quite an extensive editing process. And I'd assume this one would be the same. So it just depends on how good their machine is that they just put it all in and push the button, right? What comes out?
Jimmy, Susan, I don't know if it's been said before, but you guys have done an outstanding job, worked very hard in a tough one. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. You did an outstanding job.
I don't know that we did an outstanding, outstanding.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Carrie, do we, am I okay going with this one? So Carrie, on the last city council, what did they do with the South Pentagon Park sketch plan? Do you remember what the city council said?
Yeah, no conclusions, you know, a lot of along the same lines and comments that the Planning Commission had. Maybe in general, they were a little more positive about the project, but a lot of the same concerns as well.
Okay. All right. And it also looks like there's a lot of stuff happening with Grandview or something happened in Grandview? Or they call it the city former public works facility?
Yeah, so the council has asked, you know, to work with Fraunshu to develop a plan for the site that would include potentially, you know, a housing piece of it, a new art center, potential senior center with a park on top of the parking. So they're working on the plans. And likely, the commission would see a sketch plan maybe in January?
January, wow.
Yeah, so I should update the, the commission on a little issue that we have with the comprehensive plan. So the Met Council has told us that they will not consider any amendments to the 2008 comprehensive plan after June 30th of next year. So after June 30th, you know, we can still entertain development proposals, but they all have to conform to the current comprehensive plan. So we, it's whenever we finish our 2018 plan. So we may see quite a few development proposals early in 2018 because of that deadline.
Is that typical? Do they always do that?
I don't remember that from 10 years ago.
And why did they, I don't, I don't remember ever hearing that either.
Maybe it's to encourage cities to get their plans done on time.
Yeah, but we still have six months, whatever.
That's right. There's still, yeah, a six-month gap from their deadline.
And that, there's no discussion? It was just that-
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess we could finish our plan earlier. I don't anticipate us finishing by then, but-
But cities, I mean, can't, cities can't say, Met Council, we don't agree with that? Or?
Well, they, they can amend their comprehensive, well, they're, yeah, they're not accepting any amendments to the 2008 comprehensive plans after June 30th. The only thing they would accept is a full comprehensive plan amendment, your full document.
Nice. Yeah, okay.
So given our height limitations, we'll likely see quite a few early in 2018.
So I have one question. So, sorry, but extend, but that Fraunshu plan for Grandview, will that be subject to a public, a public session for the citizens of Edina before it comes to us for a sketch plan? Or is it, will the sketch plan to us be like the first public showing of that plan?
Yes, it would.
Shouldn't it go, be reviewed, you know, through citizen feedback first? I mean-
Well, there, it would be the, you know, the citizen feedback would be part of, if they make a rezoning application.
So, I mean, the last stuff that happened with that project were, you know, part of those community engagement meetings. And it got to a point, and it's just sat dead.
Right.
But it's not quite dead. So there's been talks. I mean, how much is this morphing from that? Or is it going to basically be the same thing we saw that most people didn't like?
Yeah, I can't comment on the, I don't know what the detail is going to be. So to get into the details of what a potential project that I haven't seen, I-
Okay. But we're going to likely be seeing it soon.
Yeah, the council has asked staff to work, has asked Fraunshu to put together a development proposal for the, for the site.
So I guess my, you know, what I didn't know is what the time limitation was on that. Because when the city hired Fraunshu paired with Opus or whatever to be the development partner of that site, then it was a, you know, the city could at any point, you know, turn their back and say, you know, we don't like how this is going. We're going to engage someone else. So I guess, just to me, you know, watching something sit without anything happening for three years, and now we're engaging the same people for likely the same thing, it's a little, I don't know.
And skipping the community engagement portion.
Yeah. Going up the same tree, so.
Yeah, I'd like to be on record as recommending that there be a community engagement for it come to the Planning Commission. I just think that's a good way to do it, for this project in particular.
You know, at the very least, I think we might ask for a status update. How was it left by the last work group? I recall some, some general concepts being pitched so that we have something to, some context to evaluate it within that did incorporate that public input. Even if no conclusion came out of that, it would at least be helpful to have a little summary of up-to-date to that point.
Sure, I could invite Economic Development Manager Bill Nundorf, who was much more involved in that, that last phase.
Right.
Maybe to our first meeting in January.
Did you have anything else, Carrie? Are you, okay, good. Yeah? Happy, happy New Year, Merry Christmas.